All right. Good morning, everybody. Today's Thursday, June the 12th. It's 10:00 a.m. and this is Josephine County Board of Commissioners convening for our weekly business session. We'll start this morning off with an invocation from David Buell and we'll follow up with the Pledge of Allegiance. So, Mr. Buell?
Father, we come to you right now, Lord Jesus. We come to you right now and we open this meeting, Lord, in your truth and in your spirit. May your spirit reign and rule in this room and the people of this great county. Father, we pray the best. In your will may it be done. In your name we pray this. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge.
I vouchrally to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll call this meeting to order at 10:01 and the first thing on the agenda is Declaration of Potential Conflicts of Interest. Commissioner Smith?
After reviewing the agenda, I see no conflict of interest. There could possibly be one, but I see none. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I as well do not see any conflicts on the agenda this morning. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for a county-owned real property and this is designation alienation sale, conveyance, exchange of property for county forests, publics, or recreation. And we have Helene here from the legal department to present to us on these properties.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
With this public hearing, the county is taking the first step in our process towards selling properties identified for divestment. There are additional properties that are being added to our surplus list for the upcoming auction. Most of these properties have previously been designated to forestry or parks, then alienated or possible sale. Two of these properties were missed in an earlier list, therefore need to go through this process. They were acquired by the county through property tax foreclosure in 1940 and 1994. So with the packet is order number 2025-47 to designate these two properties as forestry, public parks, or recreation areas. The next order in the packet is 2025-048, which authorizes the alienation, sale, conveyance, or exchange of the same properties. Regarding an alienation, ORS 275.330 requires the county to hold a public hearing to determine whether it is in the county's best interest to alienate, sell, convey, or exchange properties that are designated as county forests, public parks, or recreation areas. Public notices required for these public hearings. So notice was published in the Grants Pass Daily Courier. It was published on May 28th and June 4th. The purpose of the hearing is to take comments from citizens and hear any objections to the proposed alienation, sale, conveyance, or exchange of the designated properties as real properties. And as a side note, I would add, regarding future sales of the properties, we are making plans for an auction later this summer. Public notices will be published in the Daily Courier when all of the details have been approved by the Commissioners and are ready for release. Auction information, including a full list of properties, minimum bids, will be posted on the Real Property Management webpage on the county website. Copies of the list and bid forms will be available at the Board of Commissioners window and questions can be directed to me. My contact information is found on the website and the notices. So, to go back, this is the public hearing to take comments from citizens regarding the alienation of these properties. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, Helene. We will now open the public hearing at, I'm sorry, at 10:04 pursuant to ORS 275.3303. The notice for this hearing was published into the Grants Pass Daily Courier on May the 28th, 2025, and also on June the 1st, 2025. This is the board order number 2025-047 in the matter of designating county-owned real property as county forests, public parks, or recreation areas. Okay, this order designates two county-owned properties, county-owned forests, public parks, and recreation areas. And also board order number 2025-048 in the matter of alienation, sale, conveyance, or exchange of county-owned real property designated as county forests, public parks, or recreation areas. This order authorizes the alienation, sale, conveyance of two county-owned properties as designated by the previous board order 2025-047. We have an opportunity now for testimony. This gives each person three minutes to speak to this topic and this matter only. Would anyone like to speak this morning to this subject? Yes, sir, in the back.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Cope, Josephine County. I've never spoke before this podium, but you're in my subject. This property is called the Spotted Fawn Mine. And you, Mr. Chair, as a mining, understanding person of rock, ex-chair of the Mining Advisory Committee, you should know better than selling properties as our company requested to do an evaluation. And you agreed to that when you were chair on any new sells of the timber holdings. You hired a geologist, okay, Brian Anderson. These properties have been liquidated in the timber portfolio from 33,000 acres down to 20-something thousand. I'm very perturbed because you're selling off and when you follow the people that's purchased these properties around their own properties, including ex-commissioners and current Commissioners, I'm frustrated when you're selling a mining property and for free we offered an evaluation. I'm letting you know tomorrow morning we will be out in the field examining this 57 acres and doing geochemical analysis of the rocks that's in place. And I'm recommending to these citizens, we're the richest, brokeest county in the United States of America, and we've never been compensated for the Sheriff's Department for having a community with our wealth under the trees. This is the fifth board that's been draining our timber portfolio and I'm done with it. That's what I want to share with you.
Please address the board here, sir. I'm sorry, this is not-
That's okay, Andreas. You've known me for 14 years. You've never spoke up as the Mining Advisory Chair on these issues. I'm done with it. I'm letting you know that. Rocks don't change. Our history don't change. Our wealth hasn't changed since 1927 when the federal government came here and on Sixth Street and we had this conversation. We have a silver medal and the Courier called for the investigation and I've brought this to this board, five boards in the sequence, and no one has even took attention. But when I worked with Vic Harris, the Director of the Timber Holdings, he allowed me to make a big map of 10 properties. The Spotted Fawn that you're selling is on that. And who wanted to sell it is my question.
Time is up. Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak to this topic and this topic only? I believe I see the blue shirt there. Am I the aisle?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jay Meredith, resident of Josephine County. And I am speaking to you on this particular topic as a representative of American Mineral Research, as did my predecessor who just spoke. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about a couple of things not directly related to that 57-acre property on Coyote Creek and then I'm going to get to some specifics of that 57-acre property for your consideration. So several times over the years, we have advised the Commissioners and the county's Mining Advisory Committee never to sell any county forestry properties unless you do a mineral assessment first. It doesn't have to be a big expensive mineral assessment. You could potentially even do it for free by working with members of the Mining Advisory Committee or American Mineral Research. So several times over the years, we've called out specific properties and we've given evidence that specific properties have valuable mineral deposits on them. And those properties were just sold without consideration of those mineral values. We don't want to do the same thing again with this 57-acre property or any other property that within the timber portfolio that the county may be considering selling. So it was, I believe it was while Chair Black, while you were Chair of the Mining Advisory Committee, I believe that's when the Mining Advisory Committee made an official motion, unanimous decision, to advise the Commissioners that before you sell any timber properties, do a mineral assessment, or at least a basic overview mineral assessment. And shortly after, it wasn't too long after that, that last year, last fall, the county decided to sell over $10 million worth of timber properties without doing a mineral assessment. And so this is continuing. We need to put a stop to this so that you can say one way or the other, are you going to do a mineral assessment on these properties? This Coyote Creek property, we have, our company owns several BLM load claims immediately adjacent to this property. We've talked about potentially approaching the county to show the county the value that's there. We, you know, we haven't been able to do that because the county's had a year and a half moratorium on any sort of mineral development activities on county land, which doesn't make any sense, but that's another topic for another day. We own, we own a little over 100 acres of private property and BLM load claims right next to it that has a major historic gold mine on it. Immediately adjacent on the other side of this property is a historic gold mine called the Spotted Fawn. We already know there's significant mineral potential on this particular property. So all we're asking to do is halt the sale until we can determine the mineral values. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, against the back wall?
Good morning. Judy Aaron's, resident of Josephine County. I'm involved in so much in education, like meetings I went to this week, so I'm not that familiar with this subject. However, I come to meetings on a regular basis and I've heard this topic come up periodically. So what the gentlemen are saying, the two prior to me are saying, if we have, and I guess the main question as a naive person, this is not my field and expertise, is that why we haven't done a mineral assessment or whatever? And the reason I say that is because I think nationally, we are known as the richest mineral area in America. I mean, I expect with Trump going over to other countries and looking for minerals, we've got stuff right here. And if you don't believe it, then just go down in the corridors and you'll see all the minerals in the rocks that we have. It's amazing what we have here. It's something to be very proud of. As much as we've got our problems in Josephine County, we still, according to our mineral assessment here, we are one of the richest, I think, in the nation. So I'm not sure of all the politics and things that are going on. Like I say, my focus and passion is on the children. However, when I hear speakers like this speak, I wonder and ponder, have we done a full assessment? Maybe you have, maybe you haven't, and maybe they need to come talk to you. But before you make any big decisions and we do any selling, I don't know how, like I say, all counties are hurting for money. I get it. I get it. And I think the citizens here make about $35,000 a year or something, very poor as far as individually. But when we look at the bigger picture for Josephine County, I would just love to see us, and I would love to see Trump come here. I really would, because he's really into minerals. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak this morning on this subject and this subject only? You'll have an opportunity to speak later to any topic of your choice later in this meeting. So coming back to this topic and this matter only, anyone else like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. And at this time, any discussion or questions? Commissioner Smith?
No, I don't disagree with the two or three previous speakers. One question I have for them is buy it. If it's so rich, buy it. You've got mining claims right next door. Why wouldn't you want to buy it? I don't think it's going to cost that much. The process of examining a property for minerals, that's fine if your company wants to do that, but I don't think it's in the budget of the county to send people out doing these mineral surveys. I understand the wealth of Josephine County. My question to you is why is there not one large working mine in Josephine County? Why is there? We know the answer. It's government regulations. That's what's stopping the mining industry. If this property is so valuable, how come somebody's not doing something with it right now?
how come somebody's not doing something with it right now? Why? I mean, it's there. It could be, it could be worked. And if your company would like that property because you have properties right next to it, buy it. It's for sale.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. At this time, I want to just point out that this is a two-stage process. The first stage is designating it as real property as county forests, public parks, and recreational areas. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve an adopt order number 2025-047, designating county-owned real property, a county forest, public park, or recreational area.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I will second. Any more discussion?
No, I understand the speaker's concern. But you've got to understand, we don't have the budget to run people around the forest. I don't know how you're going to do a survey on this land. If it's hard rock minerals you're after, then you're going to have to dig for them. If it were valuable, it'd have been working mined today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no comments. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Burnett?
Excused.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Motion carries 2 to 0.
Thank you. And this is the second part. At this time, I would entertain a motion for the approval to adopt order number 2025-048, including the following findings. And that is A, all statutory and legal requirements have been met. B, this is in the public interest to alienate, sell, convey, or exchange the land set aside for county forests, public parks, or recreational areas as described in the order, Exhibit A. And Letter C, the land is set aside to be sold at public or private sale, or other lands may be taken in exchange and set aside for county forests, public parks, and recreational areas.
I'll make that motion with a caveat, with an add-on if possible. I would like to give these gentlemen that want to survey their property time to survey that property. I don't know what amount of time you need, but I think that's justifiable. I don't have a problem with that. You would need to bring your findings back to us. I don't think it's going to allow to use any heavy equipment out there. So I don't know how you go about surveying that property. I've prospected quite a bit. I know how difficult it is. So that's my caveat. I'll accept, I'll make that motion with that caveat.
Okay, thank you. A motion fails from a second. I would entertain a motion again, Commissioner Smith, if you would like to make a motion.
I kind of stand by what I said as far as a motion to give these gentlemen time to survey that property. I think that's justifiable. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, then in that case, we do not have a second on the second motion, which is identical to the first. In that case of the order, the order number 2025-048 is dead. Then we will adjourn from this public hearing at 10:19, and we'll move on to the agenda. Next item on the agenda is administrative actions in consideration of Board Order Number 2025-046 in the matter of sale of county remaining unsold following sheriff's auction dated November 14, 2024. Memorandums of contract sale, land sale contract for 12100 Redwood Highway and 108 East O'Brien Street. And again, we have Helene from the Legal Department here to brief us.
Thank you, Commissioner Black. After a property has been to auction, it is possible for the property to be purchased at counter sale, which is allowed by statute. The properties we are discussing today were received through property tax foreclosure in 2022. They have been offered at five auctions since that foreclosure. Offers I received met or exceeded the minimum bid price from the last auction. Offers were each accompanied by a deposit of 20% of the offer price. The offers were discussed by the Board of Commissioners on April 29, and the Commissioners voted to accept the offers and proceed forward. So in the packet that is available online to the public, there is a copy of the Board Order. And within the body of the Board Order are details as to where the proceeds from the sale will be directed. Those proceeds will be directed to Property Management for administrative costs, to the Property Reserve for reimbursing of cleanup costs on those properties. And any remaining proceeds will be deposited to the surplus tax fund and may be claimed by the prior owners or their heirs as per the surplus proceeds policy, a copy of which can be found on the Property Management webpage. On the last page of the order, Exhibit 1 has a list of the properties that have been sold, the sales price, and the buyer for each of these individual properties. Continuing through the accompanying documents in the packet are the memorandum of contract and the land sale contract for each of the two properties. You will note that during the three-year term of this contract, the buyer pays the annual property taxes, thereby bringing the property back onto the tax rolls. So today, I'm asking the Board to sign the documents for the sale of the properties. Any additional information or questions?
Mr. Smith?
Acreage on these two pieces. Do you know the acreage?
Um, not offhand, but it should be on the-
I think one of them was 0.31 of an acre.
They're relatively small.
Small, small acreage.
They're residential properties.
Is there housing on these properties right now?
There is, it's just land only.
Just bare land. No, no infrastructure, nothing like that.
No infrastructure.
Thank you.
So to answer your question, Commissioner, the first property is 3.1 acres, and the second property is 1 acres, both zoned rural residential.
Very small, yes, thank you.
I have no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will move on to requests and comments from citizens. This is where each person has an opportunity to speak for three minutes to address this board with any concerns that they may have. Who would like to speak this morning? Right here in the pink-
Gail Gasso, Josephine County. I take offense at the invocation held every morning during the meetings. You are not encompassing all of the other religions that have a right, I believe, to be heard as far as your religion goes. This is very detrimental to people that have other beliefs, not of a Christian God. So I would implore you to reconsider doing this at every meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Against the back wall, yeah, Judy.
Judy Aaron's, resident of Josephine County. You know, I love when we think about coming up for the 4th of July event, which I've got here a flyer and been advertising it, where we're going to be doing the Declaration of Independence out on the courthouse lawn, actually Friday the 4th at 11 o'clock. It's about 45-minute program. I advise everybody to come. You know, if you know the history, it's fantastic. The reason we have this country, the reason we have the freedom to speak versus all other countries is because of the Christian faith of our founding fathers. With the exception of few. They were Christians. They left, they left the Brits. They came over here, fought a fantastic Revolutionary War with a handful of them, and that was Providence, as far as I'm concerned, to give us a country where we have the freedom to speak, just like everybody here who might agree with whatever. So I think it's wonderful that we have that because if somebody was in Cuba today or if they lived in the Soviet Union, which is now Russia, you try doing that in those countries, and you, and you won't see your family ever again. Go try it. I challenge you to go to those countries and try the same thing as much as the freedom we have here today. And number two, I want to thank you for the three minutes. The city council right now grants pass. I don't know if they changed because of the long thing, because of the homeless situation. They only gave you a minute and a half. And I think they're continuing to do that. So I would encourage anybody that knows the council people to tell them to please go back to their, resume their three minutes for people since they only have a handful, a few of them told me they only have a handful coming. So that would be nice if they did that. And as far as the Pledge of Allegiance, when you think of Fort Bragg and what happened there, and bodies after bodies holding up that flag, because President Trump just came from Fort Bragg now. I mean, he had a speech there a few days ago. When you think of the history of that flag still standing, body after body to hold that, and because of that, we have the National Anthem, you know. So we have so much fantastic history. I would hate to have people not know how proud we are of what we have here. Oh, and during all these riots, it just breaks my heart. It breaks my heart to see people have the privilege to stomp on the American flag in this country when they're not even, a lot of them aren't even citizens here. And they don't get, they're not getting arrested and everything. You try that in another country. This is the best country in the world, and that's why people keep flooding here, because they know of all our freedoms. And it's just wonderful that you have an opportunity like you give everybody, and I want to thank you for doing that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Right here in the second row.
Good morning. Suzanne Harmony, I live in Josephine County. I had hoped that you would have Wi-Fi working this morning, but obviously you don't, I've asked. I'm here to talk to you about libraries. Do you realize that there are 25,000 people who have a library card in Josephine County? Do you gentlemen have library cards?
This is not a back and forth.
Okay, and every month, over 20,000 items are checked out of our library. This library card allows you access to something called Libby. Do you know what Libby is? Obviously not. Okay, I will show you on my iPad that it's this app right here. Libby is part of the Oregon Digital Library Consortium. And with that library card that's connected to our library, you are entitled to check out thousands of books, both printed books for a tablet or a phone or a computer or audiobooks for free. This is just one of the things that our library allows us to do. I have bookmarks that tell you about Libby that I'd like for you to have from the library. May I give them to you?
Sure, you can give them to our staff over here. Thank you. Thank you. Whom else would like to speak? Right here in the aisle on the north side.
Pat Bath, I live in Josephine County.
I'm sorry, say their name again.
Pat Bath, B-A-T-H.
Thank you.
Do you think it's important for children to learn to read? Learning to read is not easy for everyone. You have to want to learn to read. How do you instill that desire to learn to read in children? You read to them. You get books from the library and share stories together, stories about animals and people and ideas, about forests and seashores and seahorses. You read stories of imaginary places. Reading on digital screens is not the same. Reading to and reading with children is so important. We need libraries to learn about people, places, and ideas. As we get older, we enjoy reading. Books take us to places we've never been, ideas we've never thought of. Books can bring us joy. We can learn about problems that affect us and people who have been through those problems. Carnegie started funding libraries around the country because he knew how important it is for children to read. Please do not take away the funding for our libraries. If you don't want a library, fine. People who live near libraries voted to pay for them in our tax bills. It is in our county charter that the library building be funded by a dollar a year. Please let us keep our building. Thank you.
Thank you. Right here in the second row.
Nancy Lester, Grants Pass. Good morning. And we've got a little theme going on here, the guests. I want to tell you about two fun events that are happening or starting this week at the library. First is Food for Thought, Fresh from the Library. All you need to do is show your library card at participating food trucks to receive a 10% discount off your meal. It's coordinated by the owners of Blazin' Monkeys, and these discounts are available at nine different food trucks in our community. You can also get an exclusive library sticker, and I have those for you today. I'll give them to you later. Also happening on Wednesday, June 18, at 12:30 is the Bear Fest ribbon-cutting ceremony, unveiling Bear Tales, which is the newest sculpture sponsored by Evergreen Bank. It's on the outside side door of the library building. The chamber ambassadors will be there to cut the ribbon. You can meet the artist. The design celebrates the joy of storytime with a mama bear and her two cubs, and it reflects the importance and joy of reading. I invite you to come to this celebration. I know it's on Wednesday, and you've moved the WBS to Wednesday next week. But it's at 12:30, so you should still be able to finish the WBS in time to come to the ribbon cutting. And there'll be snacks in case you miss lunch. Last week, I talked about the summer reading program at the library. As part of that, this morning, the library, at the library in Grants Pass, were having Sprout a Reader, and this afternoon, the Teen Bad Artists Club. The Sprout a Reader program is for children ages birth to five, and their caregivers learn how to create engaging storytimes. Why is this important to the community? As we already heard, reading to babies is crucial for their brain development, vocabulary growth, and social and emotional well-being. Early reading exposes babies to the sounds and rhythms of language, building their vocabulary and laying the foundation for future literacy skills. The Teen Bad Artists Club is for teens ages 13 to 17. They can collect weekly stickers, listen to music, make bad art with new friends. Why is this club important to the community? It's for teens, led by teens, designed by teens. It provides an avenue for summertime reading connections important for their mental health. Today, they're personalizing a bookbag. I hope you, in the coming weeks, have some samples of their artwork to show you. My final words to you, feasibility and a dollar a year lease for five years. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Against the back wall?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Goodwin, Josephine County resident since 1977. I spoke last week about what I felt was the failed voluntary resignation program. And I asked for some accountability as far as numbers go. What we know, what is out there, 18 individuals took advantage of the program. We know that, I believe, the number is $765,000 spent on the program. And I asked about backfilling positions just as a beginning of this conversation, because I have a lot of other questions, some of which I'll get to later, hopefully. It was met at the end of the meeting. Chair Black cautioned his other Commissioners not to talk about employee matters. And I thought I would start today by educating you on the definition of those employee matters the best I can, the best I can, because you either don't know, or you're just trying to avoid accountability to your citizens. Things that you shouldn't talk about in venues like this related to employees are employee performance, possible discipline, termination. These are employees with faces that you interact with, that you have issues with. The number of employees that work for you is not employee matters, sir. That's public record, and we can get to that eventually. I don't expect that to change anything at the end of the meeting, but I also did ask for your impression on how you think the program went. Secondly, the mind-numbing debacle that I think was called a Budget Committee that happened the other day, where in the last hour of months and months and months-long process, the general fund was cut. It was like a pig auction at 4H, 30 here, 20 there, 10, 5. You wound up with 12. Commissioner Smith rightly said many times, "I don't know the impacts of these cuts." Because you don't, because you didn't ask. Budget workshops started back in February or March. You could have run through exercises, had dialogue with departments, given them, "Hey, what would it look like for a 10% reduction?" You don't know. This is reckless. This is terrible governance. You still have a chance not to vote for it, because this falls on the board. I challenge any Commissioner here, number one, lead by example. Commissioner Black said cuts are hard a couple of times. General government didn't get cut. Lead by example, take a 12% pay cut first, then present yourself with one of those medals that y'all got. That's number one. Then, number two, reach out to every department that you have no idea how these cuts are going to affect, and ask them. You've got a week to do that, then you can make an informed decision when you're trying to make this ridiculous cut.
Thank you for your opinion. Who would like to speak next? Right here in the second row.
Good morning. Kate Cordopassi, 60-plus-year resident of Grants Pass. I just would like to speak from what I've been reading in the newspaper and local websites about the proposed budget. We were promised, I believe in 2023, more sheriff patrol, and it looks like they're not going to get that. I also know that there's signs coming into Grants Pass on how we honor veterans, and I'm not seeing that in the proposal. It doesn't seem like we're honoring veterans, we're not honoring the voters, and we're certainly not supporting law enforcement. And the pay raise that a couple of you voted on, I do not see how that has been earned. Number one, we, again, have a highly-paid commissioner who's not here doing his job. We have one who was not elected, and we have one, in my opinion, that listens to the people. And I want that one to know that the people see that, and we see that at least one is doing their job. So before we start cutting, like Commissioner Smith said at the last meeting, agencies and departments that it could severely impact services we give to our residents here, we all need to step back and listen to the people. This is our town too. It doesn't just belong to you three guys. And our veterans need our help. Voters should be, felt like we're listened to, and please support our law enforcement more than the fancy little blue line flags so many around here like to fly, which is defacing the American flag, by the way. But I encourage you to please reconsider the budget with the committee and come up with a better solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak this morning still? Right here in the third row.
Vicki Palmerton, Grants Pass. After looking at the budget you've drawn up, and Mr. Smith, I want to thank you, but one thing I would like to implore you is when you don't agree, please don't vote with them. Don't stand up for something and then go ahead and vote for it anyway. That's, you need to stand for your principles. The fact that you guys would give yourselves a raise is actually pretty unbelievable. You already make much more than what is the median wage for a family in Josephine County. And then you want to cut agencies and departments by 12%. You have already screwed up these departments so terribly that you have to realize, and you have to be hearing, that if you're, if this continues and you do pass this budget, by next month, there will be a recall. You will all be recalled. You have messed with the library, you have made no effort to move forward with it, none. Barnett doesn't show up for about every third meeting, but he has time to go out and do his little news stuff while he should be working. He manages your social media pages and spends an enormous amount of time going out just for attention, just like the buttons you made for $2,500. That's nothing. Yeah, it is something. And the fact that you guys continue to not be informed or not get expert advice about your, the budget and moving forward is crazy. You're just, you haven't just stepped over the line, you've stepped over the line and slapped all your constituents in the face. And I ask you to reconsider, because a recall is expensive for the county, you will not win, and I would hope that it doesn't come to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this morning? In the back corner?
I'm Rita Aubert, and I'm from Cave Junction, Josephine County. I have never been here before. I've been paying some kind of attention. I just want to put my two cents in that I think the budget needs redone. I think you guys can do better. I spoke with you before, Ron, and I appreciate you, and I thought you would stand up stronger for the people than I'm seeing. So I hope that you continue to want to do that, if you still are. And I guess that's all I have to say, but do better, please.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to... Okay, you guys got to be quicker with the hands, okay? Okay, right, waving the hand in the back there. Yes, please.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name's Linda Spangler, and I'm from Merlin. I just walked in, so I apologize if this top, if this comment is off-topic. If it is, let me know, I'll sit down. But Saturday, there's going to be an event in our county, and it's going to be a comment on what's happening on the national level. I would like to invite you guys, and it's unfortunate that Commissioner Arnett is not here, I would like to invite you guys to attend the meeting, or the event, because I feel that it's important for us to talk to each other, it's important for you guys to come and see what's really going on. I think that we get a really warped version of what you're doing, and in kind, you get a really warped version of what we're doing. It's really important that we talk to each other and that we understand each other. Attending that event will be a great help to everyone. Now, one additional brief comment is that this has been discussed, and what was discussed was, oh, don't invite them, because they'll just spin what they see, and they'll make everybody look bad. Well, I may have a naive opinion that you wouldn't do that, that you would take it as something of either, wow, I don't really like those people at all, or they might have a point. But anyway, I would hope that it would be an honest endeavor on everyone's part. Thank you.
Thank you. Right here in the aisle with the blue shirt.
Jay Meredith, Josephine County, and thank you for allowing this public comment time. I wanted to answer the questions that the Commissioners posed, or at least that you posed, Commissioner Smith, when we were talking about the surplus property that might be sold. So why not, why haven't we just bought that property? Because we know that there's significant mineral potential there. Well, there's a couple of big reasons that we haven't bought that property. My colleague, Michael Cope, who spoke earlier, has spent 17 years trying to educate the Commissioners as to the mineral values that are on those public lands. It's not about our pocketbook. We're trying to help the county. We're trying to help the county earn money, earn revenues for law enforcement purposes. And on that note, if you sell a property, that money can't be used for law enforcement. The only way you can benefit law enforcement or other justice programs, which need all the help that they can get, the only way you can do that with our mineral values that we own, is to lease out those properties and produce mineral royalties from those properties, retain the property, but partner with somebody that, in the private sector, who knows how to do this, so you can earn lease and royalty revenues. Then, those revenues can be given to law enforcement. You'd be leaving millions of dollars on the table on some county properties if you sold it without considering the mineral value. So there's several reasons why, right there. So on the budget, the Budget Committee meeting on Monday was a very challenging meeting, I'll just say, to be nice. I think the Commissioners need to spend a lot of time, I advise the Commissioners to spend a lot of time talking to all the departments that you, where you cut the general funds to those departments, figure out what the, what the impact is before you have that budget hearing next week, because apparently you didn't watch the Budget Committee meetings last year. When a cut was proposed to the Veterans Service Office, dozens of veterans came out in protest. And then the Commissioners and Budget Committee ended up restoring those cuts. I hope the same thing happens this year, because the cut that has been made in the Veterans Service Office is even larger than what was proposed last year. And you're going to bring the Veterans Service Office down to less staffing than they had 10 years ago. I don't think there's less work than there was 10 years ago. I think it's probably the opposite. So there is a surplus in your general fund, even if you restore all those cuts that were approved on Monday this week, and even if you give the sheriff everything he asked for, there is still a significant surplus in your general fund. There is no reason to cut the general fund budgets and the general fund allocations to each of those departments. You will still have a surplus if you give the sheriff everything he asked for and restore those cuts. So look at that closely before next week. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who else would like to speak? Yes, here in the corner.
Bill Hunker, Merlin, Oregon. This is having some problems today. This past Monday, Josephine County's best and brightest gathered to solemnly engage in spaghetti budgeting. It was one of the most depressing, comic displays of mismanagement I've ever witnessed. They bumbled and stumbled about, unable to ever explain where they were headed or when they might arrive. It proceeded like this. A committee member would come up with a half-baked thought, say it out loud, and then everyone pretended it was a plan. This went on for two hours. So after two hours, what did we learn? We learned, prepare, a terrible thing is coming. We learned that the general fund is a hallowed fund, a fund that will protect humanity from the terrible thing that's coming. By the end, if you didn't understand that a terrible thing was coming, you missed the whole point of the meeting. The committee's final solution was to start amassing a whole big bunch of money to save us from the terrible thing. Everyone must sacrifice, every department, no exceptions. Well, some are exceptions, but all the others need to sacrifice big time. How much to sacrifice? Well, percentages from 5% all the way to 30% were conjured out of thin air and then comically voted on. It was an all-out effort to save us from the terrible thing that was coming. No overall goal or plan was ever verbalized. The sole focus was to amass more and more money for when the terrible thing would arrive. No shekel was too small to seize, no sacrifice was too great for somebody else to make. My summary of the meeting? May the good Lord in heaven help us all. Finally, I want to give kudos to Chad Hansen for pointing out the horribly rushed nature of the committee demands and the importance of prioritizing, and to Ron Smith for his multi-reminders that no department impact reports were ever created for any proposed cuts. And finally, to Chris Barnett for the only one creating a prepared offer. However, sad to say, but their final votes negated their good words. And by the way, we never were told what the terrible thing is that's coming.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak this morning? I'm looking. I'm looking. Please, okay, thank you, sir.
Pete McBreity Anglehorn, County Josephine. A lot of interesting subjects have been reached this morning, and I am very pro-library. As a young lad, my Scottish mom took me to the library in the beautiful county of San Diego and said, "Hey, we'd like to do some traveling. You're 11, it's time to do some traveling. Where would you like to travel?" So I went to the county library, and I found interesting places to travel. And during those travels, I found places that had other cultures. And one common thing as 11-year-old, and then as 13-year-old, and as 15-year-old, traveling, every culture I went to said, "America, wasn't it based on Christianity? Wasn't your forefathers of the country very pro-Christianity?" I said, "Yes, it is." And they said, "We wish we had the freedoms to be able to express ourselves in our country." Some of our countries that are Buddhist have issues with this situation. Some countries that have other religious backgrounds, they cannot proclaim their religion, they cannot offer it. So they said, "The blessing of being able to publicly speak your mind and even pray in public, what a gift." So I understand people's opposition, but I also understand it from other cultures' perspective, what a gift they were given, this country of yours. Why do we come? And I've invited some to come, so they could be enjoying this. So I'm very pro-library, but we also are in the year 2025, and I realize that there is a budget issue, especially with this county of Josephine that I love dearly. And they've had a gift, the library's had a gift of a dollar a year for doing this situation. I think that's, the county has shown immense generosity. But there is something called a budget, and anybody that has a pocket or a checkbook understands budget. And if there's not money for something, something has to be managed carefully. And I think it's time for the library, which I am pro, to step up and put their money where their mouth is, instead of saying, "We've had this glorious gift, keep giving it," when the gift giver is financially hurting for certain. They have to get, take on some of the responsibility as a responsible person. We're adults, we're not children saying, "Gimme, gimme, gimme." That's where, you know, the children don't come out well. So there's that, and also on the mineral blessings.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else like to speak this morning? Did everybody have a chance to raise their hand that hasn't done so yet? Did everybody have a chance to raise their hand that hasn't done so yet? Okay, bringing this now back to the board, Commissioner Smith, this is an opportunity for you to respond to those that you would like to.
I'd like to just say this very simply, plainly, and clearly. The budget decisions are not over. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I have a few more responses than my colleague does here. It was brought up about the invocation that we have at our meetings, and it was stated that every meeting was started with an invocation. I would like to correct you that some meetings have no mention of an invocation, and some meetings we have had just a moment of silence. So I believe that we've accommodated many, many people in our community. It was brought up, thanks for the opportunity to have three minutes to speak to address this board. I would like to remind all of you, all of you here, except for a few, have taken up the opportunity to meet with us in person. Our office doors are open, our emails are receiving, our inbox is working. If you have a concern, bring it to the individual commissioners. You don't only have three minutes, you have much, much more, and I invite you to take advantage of that. It was brought up that it says somewhere, it says that the library should receive a dollar-a-year lease, and I don't know where that is. I'm pretty familiar with the county's charter, and I'll read to you what it says in the charter. Section 14.5, Library Support, and it says, quote, "The library shall..." Correction, "The Board shall provide for the support and maintenance of the main library and library branches." Period. I don't know of anywhere that it says that the library is entitled to a dollar-a-year lease. I don't agree or disagree with it, but I just want to set the record straight that the documents that govern our county do not state what was quoted earlier. Right, the other topic that I'd like to respond to is there was a comment made about the raise for the electors, and that we collectively voted for a raise. I would like to make it clear that I, Andreas Black, did not, and I was a dissenting vote, and that I recommended that the electeds get a 0% vote. So I do put my money where my mouth is, just wanted to make sure that that's clear. It was also brought up about the library negotiations. I assume, and maybe I shouldn't assume, but I will restate that this board has tasked Commissioner Barnett with negotiating with the library. He has that responsibility, and as far as I know, he's doing a good job, and we look forward to hearing back from him, reporting of what his negotiations and findings have In my notes here, I've also written that it's not a surprise, who likes cuts to their budget? I think it's been portrayed here that we are relishing in this, wanting to cut department budgets, but surprised, we're not. We understand the needs of the county, the desires of the citizens, but it was also brought up that this terrible thing that is coming, and I would like to answer, the terrible thing that is coming is what's not coming. I think we are all informed and see what is happening on a national and statewide level, and that is, the money is not coming, okay? We need to realize that. If you don't realize that, I think you're naive. So with that, I will bring it back, and we will continue on with our agenda. Next item is the... I would entertain a motion, and this is to approve an adopt board order number 2025046 in the matter of the sale of county land remaining unsold following the sheriff's auction of November the 14th, 2024. And this is the memorandum contract of sale of land contracts for specifically 100 Redwood Highway and 106 East O'Brien Street. Okay, no motion?
No, I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'll approve that motion.
Okay, as I stated it earlier, just to confirm. Okay, thank you, sir. I will second that. Any discussion?
No.
I have none as well. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes. I'm sorry, excused.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Motion carries two to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven is the approval of the consent calendar. This consists of the minutes, of which the draft minutes are available for viewing at the board's office, and the Budget Committee meeting dated June 2nd, 2025, the budget meeting dated June 4th, 2025, and the weekly business session dated June 5th, 2025. I will now entertain a motion to approve item 7A, the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, and I will second that. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Excused.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Motion carries two to zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is other matters. This is under ORS 1926401. This is where commissioners may introduce other matters for consideration by the entire board. Commissioner Smith?
I would like to ask you all to join me in figuring out how to increase the income for Josephine County. If we get the income increased, we won't have to decrease the outgo. We're looking in a county here that is very unique among counties, western counties. 68% of our land is federally controlled. That land used to supply all our needs. It was a tremendous asset. Today, that land has become a tremendous liability, because all we do is burn it. Join me in helping me to move forward, to get some economic benefit out of that 68% of our land that will solve a lot of our financial problems. It did in the past, fully funded our sheriff for close to 100 years, fully funded our county government for close to over 100 years. It is the main source, and where we're going to have to look for our future income. Do you really believe that Josephine County can survive when we throw away almost three-quarters of our land and get no benefit from it? I don't think so. I know Josephine County, I know it very well. Our future is what we're going to do with that federally-controlled land. That's my drive, that's my goal, that's my purpose of being here, is to address the issue that affects us most. YMCA building, built totally, totally with O and C funds. Have you ever noticed the little patch the sheriff department carries on his arm? That's O and C, that's a logging truck. That's what funded us. So what would you rather have? Burn it or build houses? It's your choice, join me in that fight, that's what I'm going to fight for. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have nothing under other matters, so we'll continue on under announcements. Commissioner Smith, do you have any announcements?
I have none.
Okay, thank you. This may be a little bit out of order, and I wasn't able to catch the notes, but I believe Ms. Linda Spangler mentioned an event, and I wanted to do a shout-out for that. I believe you said it was on Saturday. We don't normally do it this way, but could I ask you to restate what you had said earlier What's the subject or the topic, or could you give us the title of what it is, who it is? Okay, thank you. So I will make that announcement. There is an event that is planned here at the courthouse, and to be clear, it's peaceful, and it will not be on the flowers. It starts at noon... Oh, correction, it starts at 9:00 and goes till noon. 10:00, okay. My error, it starts at 10:00. Okay, that's it, that's the announcement, and at this time, 11:04, we will adjourn today's meeting. Thank you, everyone.